So just letting everybody know, I have our four Nantucket Select Board members on. Dr McNabb isn't joining us and the town manager is on, so. And I'll just keep letting people in as soon as you arrive.
Well, while you're doing that, I'm Don Holgate Chair of the Nantucket Select Board. I'll just call our meeting to order since we have a quorum. And I'll just make sure that all of my members are present and can hear me. Brooke Moore?
Yes.
Tom Dixon?
Yes.
Matt Phoe?
Yes.
Okay, and nice to see all of you from the Vineyard again. Do you all want to go one by one and call the order if you have quorums? I don't know how to best go about that.
That's fine. Maria and I from Chilmarka here, we're a quorum who call this meeting to order. And I do have a question for whoever is the leading open meeting law authority. Since Mr. Rainey is here and I am here, and we are both board members of the Steamship Authority, we are essential and we are a quorum of the Steamship Authority. Can we participate or should we remain silent?
Jim, I think you can, you cannot deliberate, but you could answer a question.
Thank you.
Yeah, and technically you're not a quorum since it's only two out of five.
Quorum's different.
Yeah, but we, because of the voting way.
Yeah. They represent seventy percent of the votes, so they would be a quorum.
Thank you.
This is Jessica Miller from West Tisbury, and I see myself and Cindy. I don't see Skipper, but I'll call our, for the Town of West Tisbury meeting to order.
I'm here. Thank you, Jess. I'm an iPhone without a name. Oh, seven, two, six, it ends. I'm sorry, I can't.
Anybody else? I'll just, I'll just try to take the role by the horns here. Is anybody from Tisbury?
Yes, Christina Calaruso.
Hi Christina, do you have a quorum?
It doesn't look it.
Okay, so we got you. Oak Bluffs?
This is Deb Potter, Town Administrator for the Town of Oak Bluffs. I see Emma Green Beach, our Chair, on, and Jason Balboni. That does not constitute a quorum for us at this time.
Thank you, Deb.
Edgar Town?
Hi, this is Art Snabek. I'm Chair of the Edgar Town Board of Selectmen, and we, I don't see anybody else from my board on this meeting. Our Town Administrator is on and James Haggerty, and we don't have a quorum.
Okay, Aquina?
I'm Tom Murphy, Chair of the Board at Aquina. I see our Town Administrator Jeff Madison is here. I see, but I don't see anybody else from our board, so I don't believe we have a quorum.
All right, Dukes County, I think I saw Martina is on, but I don't know if you have board people.
Yeah, hi, this is Christine Todd. I'm the Chair of the Dukes County Commissioners, and I do not see a quorum. I saw Martina on. I don't see her now, but we do not have a quorum, but are here.
Okay, so, and then, so the Nantucket Select Board is on, and they just, I, just as a little bit of an intro, as some of you will recall, the boards got together in last October maybe, and there was an issue about the Steamship Authority, and it was had been deemed a good idea for the islands to meet about it. And at the end of that meeting, I think Christine, possibly you or somebody, maybe a couple others said, suggested that we have a more often. And so we, I talked with the managers, and together a bit of a list of potential topics, they're on the, our agenda, which we sent around to everybody, and certainly we don't have to discuss every single one of them, and they can go in any order. These were just things that people thought might be good discussion. So I, I don't know, I think it's, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to do much more than introduce. But the last time we did this, it was, it had been agreed that our Chair would act as a facilitator to recognize people who might want to speak, but we don't want to take over. So whoever, if anybody else wants to sort of step in to be the facilitator, feel free.
Yes, Libby, I would want you to just shut the hell up, please.
Okay. You might have shut the meeting down and started over again.
Yeah, you better, Christine. Who do you think you are muted me?
Let's start it early.
Yeah, start it early, shut up.
Another genius.
Bro, like, who do y'all think y'all are?
Shall we, shall we close the meeting and reopen the meeting?
Yes.
Uh, no, you.
Erica, can you please? Oh, okay, disrupted. Sorry, I just removed him. Um, it is a, okay, so he doesn't maybe need to be let back in? He tries to come back?
Libby, you could just stay on Nantucket to be on that like that. You don't have to do this across the, you don't have to go to the Vineyard.
So I, I don't, again, I don't really want to be the taker over of this, but we have a bunch of potential topics. Does anybody mind if I just pick one and talk about it for a second? Okay. So the DEP protect, DEP Title V regs. I've talked to some of the managers over there about this. We, I think we had a discussion when we all got together last year, and I think we all now know that these, the islands are currently, for now, exempt from these regulations. We, over here on our end, we're in the process of, we met with DEP, I think we were the second town to meet with DEP just about a year ago. I think Edgar Town may have been the first town to meet with them, and James and I had a discussion about it at the time. We sent DEP a lot of information which had to do with existing Board of Health regulations that come very close to what DEP was requiring in their new regs. So I think we were skating under the wire of the regs because we already had a lot of things in place, and we have a lot of sewer projects and a sewer master plan underway, and so that's where we are with it. And on a side note, the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, we, we've had quite a bit of discussion about whether or not to join. I don't know that any of you are on it. I can't, or in that, I can't quite recall, but it might be good to know about that. And we've, we're updating our sewer master plan right now, and one of the things, we're using Weston and Sampson to do that, and one of the things they are looking at is a build-out analysis with updated costs for what it would cost us to do the remainder of the, of the build-out, and then we're going, they're going to help do a kind of a cost benefit analysis of paying for the projects ourselves or joining the fund. So that's sort of where we are with it. I don't know if any of my board members want to add on to that, or if maybe you go around, I don't know how best to do this alphabetically, maybe, and see what people have to say about that.
Sorry, can I just, this is Erica Mooney from the Town of Nantucket. I just want to say that I'm kind of muting everyone as they come in, and so just please unmute and mute yourself as you're ready to speak.
So if we're going alphabetically, does Aquina have anything to contribute about the DEP regs?
Basically, I don't think we have any properties that'll be affected, so it's been a, not a hot topic here in our community.
Okay, Jeff, thank you. Who's next alphabetically? Chilmark?
At the moment, Chilmark is working with its Board of Health and the island, the Edgar Town's Board of Health Agent, Matt Poole, and we are looking at what the options are. Had no positions been taken.
Thanks, Joe. Um, Edgar Town?
Yeah, yes, Libby, and I think Michael Donaroma just joined, so I think Edgar Town officially has a quorum. That being said, this is going to be a huge cost, and I feel like it should be talked about more at the local level in regards to some of the news coverage, but you look at some of the newspaper articles, the Cape Cod Times, you are with Phase One, two hundred million. I can't imagine cumulatively what Phase Two is going to be. We're in the midst of or in the midst of our conference wastewater management plan, which should be complete in probably the next three or four months. That being said, there is going to be a searing initiative in some areas of the town, whether that happens in three years or forty years. I think we can all agree that we're going to be determined in NSA in the next five to ten years, meaning a nitrogen-scented area where certain things are going to be mandated, and our discharge permit is have to be renewed with those caveats. It's unplausible to say, hey, all residents in the NSA, at least for Edgar Town, are going to need to go to a IA system and have that covered. I think that's just, again, unfeasible. But ultimately, bury thirty thousand feet, fifty, sixty, seventy million dollars, maybe more, that are going to have to be spent on upgrading the various sewers, and more importantly, once those sewer upgrades happen in various neighborhoods, the forward thinking of zoning is going to have to take effect, so it's not a five to six or seven bedroom fire sale as soon as those houses are allowed to connect. But again, overarching, it's deeply concerning, kind of the mandate that occurred. Edgar Town's planning our conference wastewater management plan with the assumption that we are going to be in NSA in the next five years. The discussion happened, we're only four percent short-term rental tax opposed to six, so how that progresses. But, but overall, just a huge expenditure that's coming down the pike, and we need to start planning for it.
James, thank you. Um, Oak Bluffs?
If our Emma Green Beach, our Chair, doesn't mind, Oak Bluffs is in the process of completing their comprehensive wastewater plan, and I'm not going to say that I'm the expert on this in any way, shape, or form, but we will be looking at a twenty-six million dollar expansion for our wastewater treatment facility. But as James Haggerty has said, it's only the tip of the iceberg. There's going to be an extensive amount of money that's going to have to be poured into this, and whether we have the ability to add on additional capacity in the sewer side, or whether individuals are going to have to go to the enhanced nitrogen. We're going to probably end up employing some sort of combination of both, but it's going to be a very expensive proposition for everyone moving forward.
Thanks, Deb. Yes, I just, very true. Tisbury, Tisbury?
Hey, how are you? I'm Christina Calaruso. I'm actually a water and a wastewater operator. The biggest thing, we are also in the process of finalizing our comprehensive wastewater plan and looking into the options of adding a separate utility potentially for the testing of the advanced septic systems. The biggest misconception about how things would work on Martha's Vineyard are that everything would have to come and go from the individual watersheds. So a lot of people I hear talk about interconnections, but that wouldn't potentially be allowed. Thank you.
West Tisbury? Thank you, Christina.
Jess, can you handle that?
I can give it a shot. So much like James was saying, West Tisbury, we don't have a searing system. All of our properties are on private septics, so.
That's okay, you, yeah.
Okay, I see. Yeah, so this is a potentially huge expense for us, and I agree also with James that people are not necessarily in the know about what is coming, and more education needs to be done, and also just in terms of planning for, for spending and how we're going to, you know, individuals won't be able to afford these systems, and even if they do install them, then the, the cost of the monitoring will be a huge expense as well, so I'm, I'm concerned about it, and I think we need to start planning for it now.
Okay, that's a good overall of where.
I have something from Dukes County. So, thank you so much. The county received over three million dollars in ARPA funds, and if I can please defer to Martina Thornton to let you know how we have distributed or how we are planning to distribute that money, all pertaining to wastewater and nitrogen loading. So, Martina?
So the county commissioners with input from the select boards on the island decided to put majority of the funding into wastewater treatment issues, and one point five millions going to help with upgrades and renewal of the wastewater treatment plant at the airport business park. And then another one point four million is slated to be used for installation of the AI septic systems on the island. There are regulations that have been put in place in consultations with the Board of Health Agents and Boards of Health. And right now, we have applications that people can sign on to start designing these systems. It has to be within the three months of the ponds that we are trying to target, and this should help to get these AI systems, when they are put in place and tested, out of the provisional state with the DEP, which would then allow them to be more, you know, commonly used and hopefully bring the cost a little bit down, because we know that long term, we will have to install many more of those on the island because we will not be able to, you know, do sewage in majority of the island, so that's the news.
Thanks, Martina.
Dawn, I just sent you the agenda. If you wanted to take this on. Thank you.
May I just add one thing?
Sure.
I just wanted to also make mention that we do have a shortage of water and wastewater operators, and another part with adding all these advanced septic systems and additional testing, and we would also need to loop in continuing education and recruitment.
Um, is there anyone else who wanted to speak on this topic? I've got three pages, so you may need to use the raise hand function. Okay. I'm going to move on to the next topic then. Municipal employee housing. This has become a huge issue for us among housing across the board on Nantucket. And just, just any availability of your own housing, let alone cost. James Malkin? Oh, you're muted, James.
Thank you. I should have figured that out after three and a half years of doing this. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that subject up, because I view the issue of housing and the issue of houses to be the biggest issue that are both of our islands face, and I have a huge concern about people who are buying housing for investment purposes and taking them out of housing stock. And I was wondering, because the issue, one of the issues that I've been talking about with various people has been the issue of the constitutionality of limiting housing to a particular class or type of person, whether that's on town-owned land or privately owned land. And I was wondering if anyone has had either any experience or any suggestions as to potential bylaws that our towns or islands might entertain, that might help to curtail the growth of investment ownership, seasonal investment ownership.
Um, well, we, we are, have been in an extensive process that ties into the next topic of, of analyzing the short-term rental issue, and one of the proposals is to not allow any form of corporate ownership going forward. It's, it's not a huge percentage of what we have right now, but we have seen growth in it. And that's, this has been a very, very long, lengthy discussion on Nantucket. We actually called a fall special town meeting to have the work group put together articles, which Tom actually sat on the work group. And Tom is also our Affordable Housing Trust Fund representative now, but Brooke was for many years previously, and I've also served on that committee. So we, we have been doing significant things to fund the trust, which is across the board tackling housing issues. So we have the municipal employee housing issue, across the board, housing issues at all different income levels, and then the investment property, kind of all things are tying together.
Yes, indeed.
So James, I'm curious about your question, because we are, we are developing rental units on town-owned property in public-private partnerships with, with private developers who we issue requests for proposals on the development of rentals. I, as far as I know, there's been no issue around restricting those to what we, what we would consider year-round occupancy. We are working on some new, a new better definition of year-round occupancy, and that is also, and I think Laura Silver can probably fill us in a little bit more. There's, there's proposals in the legislature to allow our communities to define year-round occupancy as we see fit, and then to craft housing that is accessible only to people who occupy year-round. But within this, the, the housing we've done under chapter, you know, for our subsidized housing inventory, that all has been restricted to people who live on islands. Now, anyone can apply it to be in the lottery on those units, but with the desperate need, they are, if, if we see one or two applicants from off-islands, it's, the odds are really stacked against them because the application pool is, is so heavily skewed toward people who are here, and we are allowed in these developments to ask for seventy percent local preference, so that seventy percent of the units do go to people who are already here, and that restricts thirty percent of the unit even to be available to, to someone on the lottery side who would be applying from elsewhere. So there's a lot of protection on the development of affordable housing and attainable housing for year-round occupancy, as I understand it, so.
Excuse me, Brooke, was that forty B development?
Well, so it's, it's, so we have done our own development. We have a forty B development that has gone through the appeal process. It's called Surfside Crossing, and that was, that was proposed when we were not in safe harbor under chapter forty B, but we have been since. So we've been in control of what we develop, how we develop it, and the income limits or the income bracket that people have to be in to get these units, and, and so, so we're, we're largely in control, and we've, you know, our community's allocated sixty-seven million dollars up to this most recent town meeting, and then we achieved a six-point-five permanent tax override for affordable housing. So we're, our community's investing heavily in solving this problem, and we're also, we also in union negotiations this round, we, we secured language from all the unions who've settled saying that they will not, that, that the allocation of municipal housing to union members is not subject to bargaining or grievance. So we've taken the risk of grievance out on how we allocate housing that we create with municipal funds on municipal land for municipal employees.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Sure.
Matt Phoe?
My, my, a couple points. My understanding is if, if there's an overriding public purpose, you're allowed to do it. You can also put limits. You can say someone in Aspen and places say you have to have lived there two years or five years in order to have certain, be eligible for certain housing. You can't just apply and come in. So there are ways to, to do that, that, that work. And I think that the, the, if you can get ahead of the grievance, you know, the grievance with the town employees, you will be way, we, it's very fortunate that we've done this. It's, it's worked, but it's partly because we've been, you know, we were a little bit behind in our pay, and we're very generous this round. But it's also because they, the unions realize what an issue it is now for them, you know, for us to staff and us to run the town. So it is both sides trying to do the right thing.
Laura Silver?
Thank you, Laura Silver, Martha's Vineyard Commission Island Housing Planner. I just wanted to speak to what Matt just said, and just, one of the challenges we have in Massachusetts is that a lot of what's allowed in Colorado is actually not allowed in the Commonwealth. So the, the workforce restrictions that are allowed in places like Aspen, we can't legally set those and use public funds in the Commonwealth in, in most cases. We did have a meeting today. James Haggerty was on the meeting from Edgar Town and Tucker Holland from Nantucket, as well as Alex Mars from Provincetown, and Housing Assistance Corporation from Cape Cod with Senator Sears' office about codifying in mass general law in a new way, the ability to use public funds, both local and state, for municipal employee workforce housing. Also, the possibility of creating a mechanism at state level that would allow preference to be placed on a certain number of units in publicly funded projects, so that units in those projects could be, could have a first round or a permanent preference for municipal employees, potentially school district and emergency services as well. And I don't know if James, if you want to add anything to that or Tucker, but I thought it was a very productive conversation. We left with a, a game plan for moving this forward. James, did you want to add anything to that?
No, no, I agree. I mean, at the most granular level, Edgar Town's looking to purchase a property from the Martha's Vineyard Land Bank for one and a half million. The question is, how do we move municipal employees in there, considering all the laws, without circumventing anything, but do it all on board. Just the location of the property is five-minute walk from Town Hall, five-minute walk from the Police Department, five-minute walk to the school, connected to sewer, connected to water. It'd be a shame if we couldn't figure out a way to navigate those waters, all things considering. But as Laura mentioned, it's a very complex, the fair housing laws, public funds for public employees, so forth and so on.
Thank you. Jen Rand?
I'm curious for the towns that do this or are planning to do it, is the intent that the housing is, I, I guess I have a couple of questions because it has come up in West Tisbury. Is the intent that the housing is for new employees only or for current employees, and then is it intended to be permanent housing for them, or with some sort of time limit where they would, in a year or two, have to sort something else so that the next new employee or the next employee that has a housing problem can move in? I just, I guess what I'm kind of asking is, how do you choose who? Who, if everyone is on somewhat equal footing financially, but still not equal enough footing to get housing, how, how do you navigate that, and how does it work?
Dawn? Yeah, Brooke?
Yeah, I, I don't, we haven't really figured, we've just gotten these agreements in the settled contracts, and so I don't think we have, we have not developed a formal policy for how we would allocate available housing to municipal employees. Honestly, it, it's going to be thorny and it's going to be challenging. We are taking leases on available homes and apartments in order to facilitate hires, critical hires. And we, we recently advertised our retiring police chief's position without anything about housing, and we got ten applicants, and then we re-advertised that we were going to make housing available, and we got forty. and we got 40, over 40 applicants. So people are very much aware that it used to be, you could tell people six ways from Sunday about how hard it is to find housing when you went to hire them, and they still couldn't believe it until they got here. And now people are much more savvy, and they're looking at what's available and finding nothing and not just choosing to withdraw or not accept positions. So I think, I mean, Libby can speak to this a little bit more, but we are going to, to your question of, is it existing employees or new hires? I think it's a combination of both, because if you're at risk of losing someone who's been here a long time and they've lost their housing, you know, it's, it's, I guess it's about triaging and determining who's most in need and what positions are most critical. And for us, you know, our nursing home, we're required to, to house employees. We have to have certain employees, so we have to house them to make sure they're here because it's a regulation that we can't just let them go. We need them. And so really, it's going to be a very, very challenging triaging situation. But I would say just because it's going to be hard isn't a reason not to do it because it's now at the point of necessity. So we'll figure it out. And then I guess having it, not having it subject to grievance is a huge step forward for us because that was a non-starter. We never, we just knew we couldn't do it because if you gave it to a police officer, a DPW, the DPW, you know, union might grieve. So, um, but, but, but our employees also understand how important it is that their fellow workers, if the ones who have secure housing are starting to come to understand that we need to do this for their quality of life and their job to make sure that open positions are filled and, and that the stress levels come down on people covering each other's, all these open jobs, because, you know, the housing is keeping us from hiring.
Sorry, Deborah Potter, and then Tucker Holland next.
Uh, thank you very much. Nothing to add on this particular topic, but I did notice that a third member of our select board joined the meeting. So on behalf of our chair, I'm just gonna, our meeting would have been called to order at 4:32 PM.
Thank you, Deborah. Tucker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just was going to add to what the Select Board more was saying, that we're in the process of discussions with the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities about seeking a special municipal preference that would apply both to the 80% AMI units, as it local preferences has historically done, but to also the units that are above that level. And one of the things to Jen's question about, you know, is it just for a temporary period or defined period that Housing and Livable Communities has indicated is that they're probably going to want to know that the person is not going to have to leave, you know, should after prescribed timeframe, or should their employment change? And therefore, the original employee likely would remain in the unit that was allocated, and that when, if they left the town employ, when a new unit opened up, that is when that would be replaced in the inventory.
Oh, thank you, Tucker. James Malkin?
Thank you. Just, I just got a text from Christina Colaruso of Tisbury, who wants to raise her hand, but her function is not working, so.
Oh, thank you, Christina. Go ahead.
In, one thought I just had was about, in Bermuda, they, they only allow properties to be passed on through, if it is owned by a Bermudian, it gets passed on to a Bermudian, or can only transfer to a Bermudian. And if it's a seasonal, that's just one thought I had. If, I'm not sure how it would work or if it's even possible, but to have something where it's like year-round would stay year-round, seasonal would stay seasonal.
I'm going to go to Felipe Jordi next, but I just wanted to say something quickly on that. We are in the process of developing a program, hopefully with, with some of the funds, the, the six and a half million dollar override, to consider when people, when people reach retirement age and they are in a position where they feel like they need to sell their home and leave the island, that instead they get kind of a buy-down of money that they can live off of to, by, and offering a restriction that they will then sell to someone who qualifies for year-round occupancy. Almost like a reverse, reverse mortgage type, type of, type of deal. And we're, we're hoping that some people would, would take, people I've talked to said they would participate in that. So we're trying to get as creative as possible and focus on keeping year, year-round residences year-round because that, that's one of our biggest problems, is that things transfer to seasonal housing all the time. Felipe Jordi?
Good afternoon. I'm sorry it was late. Philippe Jordi from the Island Housing Trust. So Dawn, just to pick up off of that, we've been successful as a, as a nonprofit to work with property owners who wanted to essentially take equity out of their property, as you're describing. And instead of just selling their property and having to leave, they retain their guest house, and we purchased the balance of the property, including the main house, and leased them a portion of the property where their guest house is located, and then took the main house and converted it into a duplex and sold those two with ground leasing associated with it. So just as you said, it's a way for someone to take equity out of their property while still being able to continue to live on the island, in a way downsizing, really. But I did want to mention too, that we are in the, in the midst of, I'm actually meeting with the school committee today, looking at a proposal that speaks to, I would believe Tucker was talking about, which I'm very interested in hearing more, where we were given a piece of property to create school employee housing. We have spoken to the school district, and we feel like the simplest way of doing that would be for, for our private nonprofit to build and own those rental units. And then what we would be offering is, is ongoing preference to school employees, which is different than what is typically allowed. And I think Tucker was speaking to that in terms of speaking, you know, trying to get a policy essentially or regulation approved. Our understanding is that that would not allow us to secure any state funding. So we're, we're looking at this point at just local, public and private funding and financing. But Tucker, maybe you can elaborate. Would this policy change allow then for the state to fund preference for, ongoing preference for municipal employees, or in this case, school employees?
Tucker?
Thank you. Yes, I mean, that, that is the policy that Laura was talking about in terms of the meeting that James Hagerty and she and I had with Senator Sears' office today. Kind of in the meantime, Nantucket is making a separate petition to Housing and Livable Communities regarding two projects that we have in the works where we would like, not as narrow as just teachers, but the ability to place the single category of municipal employees out of the four typical local preference categories as the sole category for a portion of those, of those units that will be created.
Laura Silver?
Thank you. So we have, there are public projects underway on Martha's Vineyard. And I'm wondering, and James, I don't know if you're thinking the same thing, if it might make sense for the towns to have some kind of formal conversation together about potentially petitioning HLC the same way that Nantucket is, to see if HLC can create some kind of exception for a preference in these projects that are coming online, so that we don't have to. I, I think it's important to tackle this from, from every avenue possible. So if there's a way to achieve that through HLC with some kind of special dispensation in parallel to Nantucket, I think that would be another avenue worth pursuing. If the towns would be interested in that, I think the MBC would be available to help facilitate that conversation with HLC.
Great. Thank, thank you. Does anyone else want to speak on, specifically on municipal employee housing? Okay, our next topic is sharks. I'm not sure what I have to say on this topic. If anyone wants to jump in, we have a.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Libby.
I was just going to say, so we've had some internal staff discussion about sharks recently. There's been some news coverage about events and shark, shark attacks in Florida. There was a Channel 5 story the other day about what Long Island is doing, and it's quite extensive, drones and ETVs and lots of things that, we're not doing any of that. But we do have a shark sighting policy. We, we resurrected it and done some outreach on it earlier in the year and last year to let people know what happens if there's a shark sighting. I hope we never have an attack, but we're, feel like we're pretty prepared if we do, you know, depending on what happens. But until there's, you know, some kind of, I, I mean, I don't know. What, what do you do about this? There's, there's a shark deterrent system of some sort. That's just not happening anytime soon. So I think we're just trying to be careful. And recently, at Great Point, which is an area controlled by the Trustees of Reservations, they closed their beaches, their beach area to swim in because there were sharks in the area. There's a lot of seals out there, too. So, you know, where there are seals, maybe I'd be super careful. I don't know if you all have the same problem, issue, concern.
Yeah, I'll give it, I'll give it a quick go, if you don't mind. As, as someone who spent 12 years living in Australia where there are sharks, many of the beaches have shark nets set up outside of the beach, about 200 yards offshore. You probably have noticed that there are still a lot of shark sightings and shark attacks in Australia. So you really can't close it off. And I think the only thing that I think is viable is that making sure that our EMTs and first responders know how to deal with not just lacerations, but amputations. And when they're confronted with a limb being taken off. That and possibly use of drones are the only thing that, and sightings are the only thing I can think of. But we do have miles and miles of beaches with very few people. And if there are seals, those, that's bait for sharks. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on the shark topic?
I'm going to move, move on. Short-term rental issues, I just addressed that a little bit. We, so we, we had, we convened a work group after some short-term rental limitations came forward and, from citizens, and ultimately failed at town meeting for numerous different reasons. And they just, they completed their work, and we had committed to a fall special town meeting to bring articles forward. And we're, the Select Board, just at the, the last two meetings, has been discussing the proposal. And we're just, um, there have been some lawsuits filed that short-term rentals are, against private citizens who operate short-term rentals. I think there's three open lawsuits. And the, the argument is that, that there, it's a commercial operation in a residential zone. So there's a pretty big divide on the island about whether short-term rentals are residential use or a commercial use. And one of, I would say, one of, the big thing that people agree upon is they don't want to see a proliferation of homes that are strictly corporately owned as short-term rentals with never, never any private use. And that the, the article is trying to address that while still grandfathering in sort of what's been a, a practice on Nantucket for, you know, well over 100, 100 years of people kind of sharing, sharing their homes with others when they're not using them. So I don't, I don't know how that's working out for all of you. We've also realized a tremendous amount of revenue from the short-term rental tax. So there, there's a balance to be made there. And I'm, just for full disclosure, I'm not fully participating in this as a Select Board member because I'm in the real estate business. So I have a financial interest conflict. But I still think it's, I mean, it's an incredibly important topic. And I'm, I'm not sure what, what, if anything is being done on the vineyard and what your concerns are out there. Jen Rand?
Do you use a, so do you have a short-term rental regulation? And do you inspect them all? And who does the inspections? And do you use a management company that tracks? You know, I get contacted three times a year by companies offering to scour the web to find short-term rentals to make sure they're paying their taxes. But we don't, at this moment, have any regulations or registration for short-term rentals because we don't, we don't have a lot of bandwidth if we start registering to do the other steps it takes, like registration and enforcement.
Yes, I, I can answer. Brooke Moore has her hand up, so I'll, I'll pass to the vice chair.
Yeah, so our town meeting, is it three years ago now? Two years ago, passed initially a registration, a, a general bylaw to register and set a, a set of regulations. And it was really intended as a, I would describe a nuisance bylaw rather than a controlling how many or how they're operated bylaw. And so that has been, that, no, it was two years ago. We've been in the process of building out a platform for that using a company called Granicus, which is, oh, does this around the country. What they didn't anticipate was how many of our rentals are not rented through the digital platforms. And so I think that led to some pretty great need to adapt their existing technologies and platform to apply here. And we were just informed at our meeting last night that they expect the platform to roll out in the next few weeks, which would be registration of all short-term rentals. There, there, you can look at our, our bylaw. It's 123, I think, with some very specific requirements about insurance inspection, fines and for violations, et cetera. And of course, the fee structure can be modified to cover the cost of the program and enforcement. So we're allowed, we set up a fund in order to allow us to bring in the fee and net out the cost of actually monitoring and managing short-term rentals. And then really, what's, what we've been debating now is, do we want to in some way limit them? The, our first step was strictly regulation with health code enforcement, et cetera, to be managed by our Board of Health and Health Department. And, and this next phase we're moving into is the debate over, should they be limited in some way? And how did, how does a community go about? If the goal is to limit them or in some way, how do you go about doing that? And that is, those are the articles that we are debating right now to go on this warrant for the special town meeting in November.
Thank you, Brooke. Laura Silver?
Thank you. The six Martha's Vineyard Planning Boards asked the Martha's Vineyard Commission to assist them in engaging a Asked the Martha's Vineyard Commission to assist them in engaging a consultant for an island-wide short-term rental study. To gather the data necessary for the planning boards to start looking at. The distribution of corporate owns versus private ownership versus. You know, um, how long or what's the duration of the short-term rentals? How many of those are partial homes? How many of those are full homes? What's the average nightly? You know, rate, uh, impact on housing. So we have, uh, there was a grant application filed last month and we. Heard back from the state that they're processing it and we're hoping to hear in the next couple of weeks whether or not. We're accepted for the grant. If so, we would have the funding to start. Uh, to start the, getting the study underway.
That's, that's similar to what, what we. Have undertaken and we're hoping to gather additional data going forward from the local rental registry. Matt Fe.
Yeah, hi, uh. The, the devil is gonna be in the details on this. Uh, and I, and people talk about limiting and I, I look at it as slowing the increase. You know, I'm not sure that we're gonna actually be able to really limit.
Oh, Matt, I think we lost you.
Can you hear me?
Oh, now I can.
Let me see if, does that help if I don't, you don't have to look at me?
I mean, I can hear you.
Okay, there we go. No, the devil will be in the details. How do you define corporate? There's a lot of LLCs that could have multiple owners. And, you know, I was speaking with one today who has five short-term rentals here and he's got a few in New Orleans and a few elsewhere and it's his business. And so there's a real strong push not to, you know, not to impact people. And so, yeah, that's gonna, that is what we are struggling with as a community. How do you define it? And how do you treat? People in a way that's fair, that, you know, people have already made plans, et cetera. Uh. And I think what I see, I've got three lots, I've got employee housing, I house about 30 people. And the gentrification is what's. Is harming us. A lot of the houses that are being purchased now in like our year-round areas are being turned into really nice. Three, four, five million dollar homes. The lots are selling for a million four to a million eight. So I've got, you know, three lots next door that just doubled in value overnight. And, you know, and I, and so I've got to sell a lot of loaves of bread just to pay for the increase in the, you know, in my taxes from that. And so I think that's, there's a lot of these issues that people. Uh, that we're struggling with in trying to figure out, you know, how to handle it.
Thank you, Matt. Um, it sounds like you all are undertaking a similar process to us, but you're just maybe like a, a year behind what, what we've been doing. Um, it, does anyone else wish to speak on this topic right now? Otherwise.
Dawn, I'm just gonna add, our, you know, uh, we hired a data consultant to, uh, and, and we had a lot of cooperation from, from, uh, the. Nantucket Association of Real Estate Brokers, NAREB. Who provided, um. A ton of data, uh, through to the town's data consultant who also had access to other, you know, data points. Um. Uh, and so there was, there was pretty robust data analytics, but they don't go back all that far. So trends were hard. To predict or to show. I think Tom's shaking his head. He was on. So it, there, there really wasn't a lot of trend data to understand where the market is going. Has, has come, especially with the pandemic in the middle. Um, and so we're really hoping that the registration platform will provide robust data so that. That should we have a regulatory framework in place, we'll be able to, uh, monitor where the market is going. And adjust accordingly, uh, based on, you know, impacts or concerns that we have. That are, that are understood by real data of the actual experience of short-term rentals on, on Nantucket.
Thank you, Brooke. Um, I think I'll move on to the next topic, which is staffing. Um. This is obviously, you know, so, something that we have a great, a great deal of trouble with. We just, um, Libby might be better speaking it to this, but, um. We just did a, um, wage and classification study and this year we've given out. Um, pretty significant raises to both not, non-union and, um, and in our union negotiations. To keep, keep up with the cost of living. Um, and then obviously the housing issue ties into it heavily. We, um, and that, that's why we expanded our. Even restriction, income restrictions up to 240% of area median income. Because it's, it's, it's impossible to find a house on Nantucket for even under $2 million these days. Uh, and it really, the average is, I think about three and a half now. Um. And, um, we've had quite a bit of turnover. I don't, I don't know if Libby Gibson wants to talk about that a little bit.
Dawn, I, that's an excellent, um, overview of what we just completed doing. And as, as you mentioned, we did give some. Fairly significant raises out to, um, mostly non-union. However, the unions are all in collective bargaining. We have settled with police, fire. AFSMI and. Don't think we say an island home, um, which is SEIU. Um, we still have our Launa, um, outstanding, but in, in any event. One of the things we want to let people know when they're inquiring about the study is that a lot of the. Employees or positions, I should say, that had experienced increases were largely because they were underpaid. So we needed to bring them up to a competitive market. Based, um. Rate, but also we have to account for the Nantucket factor and that's proven to be rather difficult to pin down in the form of an exact. Percentage increase that, you know, people on Nantucket should get paid over elsewhere. There's, there's no number really. So we, we've used some different methodology to do that, which, um, is contained within our couple of last. Study presentations, but we're finding that. You know, it's. It's hard to hire people. It's really hard to live here. Um, you all, we're preaching to the choir right now about this. And we're looking at some other non-monetary things like a succession plan and. Input, we have a little employee morale group and we have employee leadership group and we're trying to work on. Training and employee get-together types of things and little events that departments can do. Just things that make it attractive to work for the town that perhaps other employers on Nantucket don't offer. Or. You know, just trying to make it, yeah, I really want to go work for the town. It's so great and fun. And I just love working there. So we're, we're, we're spending a lot of time trying to come up with. The creative ways to induce people to work here and keep them working here.
Um, I don't, I don't see any hands raised. Oh, Jen Rand.
We had just the, the town's experience with this was that this. Year at town meeting, um. A warrant article was brought forward. So we had our standard. Wage adjustment. It's not a cost of living adjustment exactly, but it's a wage adjustment. Takes a couple of factors in and is factored the same way annually. And that came to 4.4 and then a separate article was brought forward. For, we don't, just for Nantucket's sake, we don't have any unions in West Tisbury, so we don't have any collective bargaining whatsoever. The police aren't even unions. We have no collective bargaining. And the school is a district, so someone else bargains with them. So. Um. After the 4.4 went forward, there was a separate warrant article proposing an across-the-board 10% increase. And it was actually, it passed a town meeting, much to my surprise, frankly. Um. And. I will say we've had a couple of positions advertised that are going to be able to take advantage of that 10% increase. And we've had. Zero applicants. The health. Agent assistant position has been open for. Jessica, months? I don't know, months. And, you know, other unbenefited, we have another small unbenefited position we've had no interest in. We've had. Another, an unbenefited assistant animal control officer that has been open for a year. Um. And it's, it's a little complicated because. We, we live on an island that I think the town pays very well. I really do. When you, particularly when you package in the benefits package and you look at the true value of your employment, it's actually a, a very good. Um. I think it's a good salary and it's, it's a good retirement, but the trades pay better on paper. And. People don't want to move here because there's nowhere to live. And so. The, the struggle is real, but it's not just us. If you look at the paper, Wellfleet. I mean, Wellfleet's kind of in its own category because they have their own issues, but Wellfleet has had just phenomenal, they've had. Four town administrators in how many years? And they've had. Their finance director's gone, their accountant's gone, their town clerk has got, they've got tons of empty positions. And then. There's an article in one of the Western Mass papers today that these smaller towns of. You know, these tiny communities can't fill positions. So. Some of it is absolutely related to our housing issues, but by no stretch is all of it related to that because. People are not working in, people aren't going to work in towns. Outside of Cape and Islands as well. And, you know, how you solve that because we have things we simply must do as a community. There are, there are services we must provide. And we don't have the people to provide them. And it's a, it's a. Constant question. We have some retirements that will come up in the next year or two that scare me to death. With financial positions and I, I can't even envision how we're gonna navigate that. Basically, we just steal from another town. So. You know, my other town administrators will be coming for your people in a year. So.
Jen, just to follow up a little bit on that, um, another, another approach we're starting to look more and more at is. Different ways of working. So we have, um, probably we're looking at more and more positions that are going to be working remotely off-islands. And those people will come to the island for periods of time. Already our communications manager is, is remote. We, our assistant finance director is in Western Mass. Um, we have a, a strategic projects manager. He's in Virginia. And they, they come here pretty regularly, but I'm gonna say at least once a month or, or more. However, uh, another thing we're starting to. Find out about, although we haven't done a deep dive into it and I hate to even mention it publicly, but. When you have employees who live in other states but are working. Even for you in another state, they tend to have rules that we don't have. So workers' comp might be different, disability insurance, um, payroll taxes, and even though they're working. For Massachusetts or a town in Massachusetts, they have their, those, the states they're in have their own employee. Rules and regulations. So that, that's just a whole level of layer of. Complication that we haven't totally uncovered yet. Um, we haven't, have some employees who commute. And we're just gonna have to look. At where that's possible. Um, so far the, the remote people, it's not terrible. It, it would be better if they were here, um, but, but also in a way we don't have room for them here. There's, there's the office space is also problematic. So it's rough being us.
Ms. Hagerty.
I was just gonna caveat for what Libby said. In Agar Town, we have multiple department heads who commute from Falmouth. That being said, we do have an ancillary. Uh, employee benefit working group, the several department heads and several mid-level managers. And that being said, it's likely gonna go to. Town meeting to completely cover, uh, their travel costs with a special fund, uh, to cover their, their trip from Falmouth or whatever it is. And also. Likely provide signing bonuses. I mean, Agar Town pays pretty healthily, but, uh, signing bonus incentives for some of the, the new employees, just because we're, we're in the same boat with finding, uh. Different department heads and specific skill sets than the financial realm and the regulatory, uh, departments.
Thank you. Matt Fe.
Yeah, one of the, uh. One of the things we've done, uh, a- along with correcting wages that were out of line. We also recognize that some of the lower and mid-tier were, uh. You know, some of them are very out of line and we solved that with a market correction. So we gave 10 or $15,000, depending which department. And we've offered a market correction, which meant more to the people at the bottom than the middle and the top. We corrected the ones at the middle of the top that needed to be corrected, but we also, you know, sort of recognized, and we've actually taken away a couple. Lower steps in a couple of the unions to try to get people here. Uh, this isn't just a town problem. I've got a business and it's very difficult and I'm gonna sound old, but. The people that I'm hiring now, I have mostly young people. Their world is in their phone and, you know, and, and them being away from that for, you know, a, you know, four-hour shift, six-hour shift before they have lunch. Is very, very difficult and their expectations are so different. They're used to looking at. You know, their friends and everybody and, and life is wonderful. You're always at a beach and you're always at a party. And so we're honestly, we're competing and, and they'll say things like, I'm living to live. I'm not living to work. You old people, they tease me all the time. You live to work. I don't live to work. You know, and until there's a, you know, until there's a sort of a, a down, you know, a real. Economic decline for them, a lot of them are not going to. And, and I sound really old, but I've got a buddy, he's, is an economist. He says, you know, it, it, if it happens. Then it'll be different, but as it stands now, it's very, very difficult to attract. And retain no matter what you do. The young people don't, you know, and I'm speaking generally, but they don't appreciate the benefits that the town has, the benefits I've put in place. They just want to say, how much am I getting paid? And can I tell everyone I make fif- you know, 50,000, 100,000 a year? You know, you could say, well, we're paying you the equivalent of that. We're housing you and feeding you and everything and they don't really care. What's my pay? And so it really. And, and Libby has done a good job of trying to bridge that and sort of explain and, and Amanda, our HR has tried to explain. The value the town has because I think those benefits are hugely valuable. But I'm not sure they're appreciated.
Thank you, Matt. Um, does anyone else wish to speak on the staffing topic? Sure, we're all up against this pretty significantly. Um. Our next topic is steamship authority issues. I do see that Bob, Bob Davis is online and I mean, I, I'd just like to say on behalf of Nantucket that. The steamship is our, our lifeline along with the high line and, um. I do appreciate many of the accommodations that you may make for us, um. And, um, I mean, I do have obviously my, my little own peeves about it, but at times, but, um. But for, for the most part, the, um, the steamship's a really great partner to Nantucket.
For the record, uh, this is Malkin. I'm recusing myself from this part of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Christina Calaruso.
Hello, how is it going? Um, I am a former merchant mariner and graduated Mass Maritime. And I just wanted to touch upon a, um. A recent tragedy in our industry out of the Port of Newark. Where there was a, um, car carrier ship on the pier. That had an electrical fire and unfortunately two of the local firefighters from the Port of Newark. Um, ended up having, um, passing away during this tragedy. There was some issues regarding international fittings and. Um, not having the proper couplings and then also they hadn't drilled together, um, down at the pier in several years. I, I did, um, this week get contacted by Mike McDonough and from Resolve Salvage and I did invite him. Onto the call to listen in, um. He, he also on the call is Joseph Farrell from Resolve Salvage. And they had offered to, through the nonprofit side of their company to potentially help, um. Help both Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard side potentially do more. Help both Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard side potentially do more drilling or local um training with the fire departments. I didn't know if um if I could just have Mike hop on just for one second.
Sure.
Good afternoon, everybody. As Christina said, yeah, there was an unfortunate tragedy down in Newark um recently. With a a car ship catching on fire, um, and one of our customers is the Steamship Authority. Uh, we are a salvage marine firefighting company uh based out of Fort Lauderdale. And uh, the company owner, Mr. Farrell here is actually on the call with us right now. He uh has a house on Nantucket, which I believe he's at right now. So we are a salvage marine firefighting company, which means that uh we are contracted through the SSA. To help them out in a um. Unfortunately, and like you guys are talking about sharks and nobody wants to talk about sharks. Well, in my world, nobody wants to talk about things catching on fire, but unfortunately, we all have. Fire departments for a reason and Christina being a volunteer firefighter and all that, you know, in a merchant area, we we talked the other day about it. We have been in contact with the SSA about doing some more training with them. And uh, try and grow that relationship with local fire departments and the SSA through us on the commercial side um. To help out and Christina thought that it'd be a good thing for me to come and say, do you guys, and I also wanted to give Mr. Farrell uh a chance to say hello. And uh, talk about his side of the world. So Joe, if you're on, you can chime in.
Thank you, uh, Mike and Christina. Yes, uh. I'm on resident up there in the summers, uh, sometimes in the winters passing through. Uh, background resolve is uh the name responder for the steamship. Authority, uh, if there's a problem where this responder is probably like. Number one in the world, rescuing ships on the planet right now. Uh. We've Mike just come back from a big job there in in uh Washington State where the fire fire department uh. Working with us, uh, didn't want to listen to us and and it became a real, real mess, but we've been to a number of fires. Uh, in the ports, we've got probably half the ships to come to the United States with the name. With a responder, we've got a school Fort Lauderdale have trained, we've trained fifty thousand. Port Fire Department uh. These in the matter, in fact, with the name respond for all the cruise ships, Carnival, Royal Caribbean. I'm watching the disasters around here. Uh, around the United States needless, you know, the the fighting a shipboard fire is totally different than a land-based fire. And that's what gets these guys in trouble. So I said, you know what? Uh, Christina Sullivan had just recently reached out to us about helping us. Looking with them uh with a, you know, if they have a battery, car battery fire on the uh one of the steamship, so. I said, I think, and I said, like, we gotta get everybody together, so I figured I would. Jump in here today, but the idea is not to just work and train the steamship. They're pretty good, great record, by the way. Steamship guys, you should be happy with what you really your safety records were awesome. We know, we travel the planet and see it. It's not usually like that. Uh, what we love to do is get all the municipalities. Because whenever one of ships on fire, she's gonna either pull into wherever. She's not gonna go to port of destination. She's gonna go back to uh. Yeah, Woods Hole, Hyannis, come back into Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard. Would love to do is get everybody that's on the call. To start uh uh getting your fire departments engaged. And get with us because we'll do it if there's no funds budget-wise, we'll do it at our own cost. Uh. I'm blessed I can do that, uh, but it's way important. There's just too many fires. The last couple of guys that were killed over there, like Christine said, New York was was needless. We walked on a ship, cock carrier, and we just put out. Uh, eight months ago, like maybe a year ago, Mike, I don't know if you were on that one down in Jacksonville, blue.
Uh, Jacksonville was three years ago, but yes, we we had a we had a nine hundred foot uh rower ship on fire. Uh, and we 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 mitigated those issues.
What happens is the land-based guys will go in there. Uh, and they, you know, they're used to knocking out a window here and there and the house blow but blowers in there and blow blow out so they can see see around. Well. When you do that on a ship that's uh been buttoned up, you're trying to put the fire out by suffocate. That's we had six of the guys in. Jacksonville blowing themselves up. Three years ago, I'm like, so anyways, that was I just want to say hello and. We're a good resource for you. I wouldn't be wasting your time otherwise, but if you could get all your fire departments to get involved with it. And if there's not a budget there, whatever, but it's some basic, very basic stuff can save lives and save these fired the chiefs firefighting careers and so forth. And Michael, thank you for what you're doing here.
That's that's right, what we do, boss. So a- anybody on the boards have any questions, anything we can we can help you guys out with or? Questions, comments, concerns? I saw James, I know you're on the Steamship Authority Board or something like that.
Yeah, um.
Sorry, Don, sorry.
Well, I I mean, I I really tha- thank you for like sort of enlightening me on on these issues a little bit more. Yeah, no, I just I appreciate it. Um, did anyone else have any comments? It's good information to know.
Yeah, I mean, if if anybody has any context, we would like to do is get talk to the fire chiefs in town. And uh, you know, just kind of meet them and I like to say, I like to meet everybody before an issue happens. So when we show up, when I show up, because I will be the one showing up. If the SSA has a big enough issue where they call us, um. I will be the first one. I I live on the mainland in Norwell, um, so I'm very close to you guys.
Okay, great.
Now, uh, let me interject too, Mike, as you probably know better than I, uh, Christina Sullivan and uh John C. Naylor, the director of our fire school. They're gonna talk on August second, so we're gonna lock in what that looks like for the steamship, but it'd be a darn shame if we don't tie in all the port fire. All the firefighters that could respond to these vessels that will have to, you know, it's it's really hugely needed.
Yes.
And I just wanted to circle back, sorry to hijack the meeting with um that topic. It just came about. Naturally, over the last couple of days after the tragedy. And every code of federal regulation regarding our industry, there's usually a loss of life that is. Contingent on why that that rule or regulation is in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, Joe.
All right, thank you, girls and guys, for what you do.
Thank you.
Uh, you guys have to put some time there, bye.
Did did anyone else um wish to speak on any steamship authority issues? Okay, well. We we appreciate you, Bob.
If I may, just I just want to go on said that, you know, we do. We do conduct regular fire drills with our with our crews as as required or uh in in. More than more than what the requirement is in terms of uh the crews for training. Uh, we do, uh, you know, for instance, we're getting some electric buses, so we're gonna be having. Um, you know, the the mainland fire departments are gonna be coming to to watch how those 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 vehicles charge. Um, you know, Christina brings up a a. An issue um. In in the industry now in terms of uh hybrid vehicles on board uh vessels. Um, you know, we're we're looking at, you know, what best practice is and and things like that, but. Um, you know, it's obviously something as uh more and more people buy hybrids, it's gonna become more and more of an issue, so. Um, but, um, and then also we we do send uh uh crew members off for firefighting training. They they do STCW training and an element of the STCW training. Even though it's not required for the for for our service, um, it it does have a a firefighting uh component of that as well, so.
That's good to know. Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak on steamship? Okay, um, next up is summer issues. I'm not sure what everyone else is seeing, but the biggest complaints I hear are about traffic congestion and um. Our our kind of latest is um. Is e- e-bikes, e-scooters, um, all of all of the intermodal um competition. Is um is hard to manage for um in sa- and um ma- mainly with safe safety. But um, but we we definitely, there's there's been a lot of talk on what other things can we provide? To limit the sort of single occupancy vehicle trips. And ma- making it um a little bit, little bit smoother to get around the island in the summer.
I just don't see it realistic on the vineyard to have. You know, it's just so, I mean, the moped question down island has been working, I think, on getting them banned, but. You know, cars are here to stay on the vineyard. We're certainly too big for people to come without them. And it, I mean, the bus system is actually fantastic, but realistically, if you're a mom and dad and. Four kids and beach gear. So it it gets tricky quick and traffic. Is terrible everywhere for July and August for sure. It's just a given, I think. I don't, I I just don't see a solution because you can't tell people they can't bring them.
Yep, we we face the same thing. Jessica Miller?
Yeah, one one thing we're seeing, we had a um. I forget what year, but we put a roundabout in at a four-way stop intersection which created, which made that intersection. Work fabulously even after much debate, um, but because that's working so well. All the intersections at the ends of those roads are more congested, so kind of looking at the road systems in a comprehensive. Picture, so when you change one end, you have to think about the other end. So as as we try to make improvements to our infrastructure. Kind of considering the whole system instead of only singular spots. I think it's kind of important to pay attention to that.
Oh, yes, we talk about that a lot. And um, you all don't have any stoplights on the vineyard either, do you? Okay, that that's a big thing. We do not want to institute any kind of stoplights on Nantucket. Matt Fein?
Yeah, we've got a a couple uh round or one round, one mini roundabout and we've talked about more. And exactly what you are describing uh with downstream impacts is what we're kind of struggling with. Because common sense tells you you're going to have those and we haven't really looked at it, though our transportation. Planner is back, so hopefully, you know, I was on a BPAC meeting, bike. Pedestrian meeting before I came to this and they're looking at uh doing some of that traffic modeling prior to making some changes. Uh, I have a bakery and a sandwich shop. My drivers are out probably on the road. Six, eight hours a day total. And every two or three days now, one of them comes back with a horror story. It it's it's just different. Here than it's ever been. People are in a hurry. They're not looking at the e-bikes, the cars aren't, the e-bikes aren't looking at the cars. And they have seen a couple of serious accidents and every day they see it, you know, every two or three days. I don't want to overexaggerate. They see somebody hit by a car, running into a side of a car. It's it's. Kind of mayhem out there and we really are trying to figure out how to. Rain it in. Uh, I think. And this is a slightly different topic, but I can see from our sales numbers at my business. That we have built such a capacity for the peak. That now it used to be Donald, Donald confirm this, but you know, twenty fifteen, twenty years ago, if somebody said, I wanna. Uh, I want a rental in. August, your real estate agent or their friends would laugh at them. You can't get that. You need to get that in February. Now we're advertising. That they're available in August and I think what's happened, people can now pick the week they want to come because we built such capacity. We couldn't bake fast enough the Fourth of July week. We have the Friday will be, you know, will double from Friday to Saturday, our sales will double. And I think that that's gonna happen again the end of this month, the first three weeks of August. And so I think one thing for, you know, the vineyard to think about is do you build for the peak? You know, do you, you know, we have the airport, planes have to touchdown, throw everybody out the door, I'm kidding a little bit. And take off again because there was nowhere to park them. We were so busy on the fourth. And so I think we really, I think. How do you encourage more sustainability? How do you get people to come uh in the shoulders or, you know, for longer periods? I think. Those are value. We did it in the past. We had, it was, it happened because we had constraints. The the steamship was. Two hours long and we didn't have enough housing. Now that we've built to this certain level, we have a whole nother host of problems. That we have to deal with. I don't have the solution, you know, I don't think any of us do. I talk about. Uh, I talk about what is our gondola? How are we gonna? Move car, you know, and and tell you why they have a gondola to go from town to town. How are we gonna move people on this island? Without single-family cars in a way that works, you know, and the buses aren't gonna work because they're on the same road as the cars. So, you know, so we're in the same boat.
Thanks, Matt. Um, and I mean, anyone is welcome to bring up any other summer issues that they're experiencing. But this seems to be one of our biggest. Biggest compl- complainers anyway. But if no one else wants to say anything on that, um, the next topic on the agenda is sustainability. Oh, I'm sorry, Christina, I just saw you had your hand up.
Yes, sorry. I just wanted to hop on. Um, Nantucket does two things. That I I've been like watching for a long time that you guys do very well, one of which is they have a daily report. Of all the beaches with the surf conditions by the color code. Uh, on the net and they post it on the Nantucket current Instagram page and. Obviously, it's it's done maybe from the harbor master because they're in charge of all the lifeguards uh over there. But the other thing I did want to mention, uh, while everyone is on the line is. I've mentioned it to some of you privately, but um, Nantucket also has a numbered system for all the beaches. Private and public and you have these signs that say you are at location eighty-seven. It could say like Kwan Soo five. And um, then it has a lifeguard can and um, I asked. The background of it, uh, Libby, the background of it, and she said that it was a lifeguard that kind of took the horns and went for it. Um, I've been to three fatal drownings on Martha's Vineyard. Um, all on the south side of the island. I've been a lifeguard or swim instructor since I was fifteen years old. Um, two of the drownings were at Kwan Soo. Uh, one of which nine people called nine-one-one and only one person said the look, the right location. And then the latest one um was similarly reported on the wrong side, which was a delay in resources. Um. That's something I just wanted to bring up. Obviously, it's a grandiose idea and uh will would be a a big lift, but it's something I just wanted, I think. There's. I'd love to see a map that actually had every location and date. Um, for the data to, you know, curtail um maybe certain places to do different things, but I just wanted to bring it up while we're all together. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that that that's been tremendous for us to have that information out there and the locations. Over time.
It also mitigates people driving around looking for each other.
Yes, that's true. Vehicle trips. So sustainability, sustainability is such a broad topic. I mean, this can can play into. Human human resources, environmental resources, um. But but it's just the the sustainability of community. I don't, um. Anyone jump in here? About sustainability because it's um. It's a big one. A broad one. Mary Longanker? Mary's the chair of our Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission.
Uh, thank you, Don, and so we're the counterpart here of the Martha's Vineyard Commission and I'd like to ask their representative. To just talk a little bit about your climate action plan and what you've been able to implement and what has been well received on the vineyard. Thank you.
I don't have a hand up.
Maybe she's not still there.
We might have lost her. Robinson?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I'm a Martha's Vineyard Commissioner. I also chair the Climate Action Task Force. Uh, the island is uh through an MVP grant. Uh, conducted a a an island plan, a climate action plan uh that outlined somewhere upwards of a hundred and eighty or a hundred and ninety actions. Uh, all the actions are spread amongst island uh organizations. That, you know, are involved in different aspects of of climate planning. Really, climate planning touches almost everything we do. If we're smart about it, we will take a a climate lens and apply it to every decision that we make going forward. But we're lucky on the island to have, you know, a number of really intelligent folks that are working on energy transition. Uh, we have the Island Grown Institute that's, or Island Grown Initiative, sorry, that is doing a lot on food security. But you know, when you think about sustainability, you have to recognize how connected we are currently to the mainland. For services almost on a day-to-day basis. Um, and I, and, and as we think about sort of global shocks and the effect of supply chain. The more resilient we can be, the more rugged, rugged we can be on providing, uh, services at a local level. Uh, we'll be able to sustain ourselves better, uh, and be less affected by what, what will be. A series of global shocks that will come, um, you know, and they will be. Unannounced and you, you won't know when they're going to come, but they will come, whether it's food shortages or other shortages. And so. You know, really, it's about ruggedizing ourselves in a way that we're more resilient. Currently, the vineyard, you know, has a, a burgeoning farming community, but we only produce, you know. Five to seven percent of the food we consume and that, and that's nowhere near enough to be resilient. So there's, there's lots of topics, but I would stress that, you know, be smart about looking at every decision through a kind of lens. Uh, and figuring out, you know, what, what effect is that decision? You know, how does that burden, you know, the, the, a sustainable movement? Um, the other thing that is, you know, a real struggle to sort of wrap your head around. And something that we, you know, talk about as well. Is that our economies are based on really a luxury, um, luxury services. And those are the very services that need to be curtailed. Um, until we've transitioned off of fossil fuels. And so. You know, for the next couple decades, if, if we were smart as a world, we would know how to do this. But you know, it's places like the Vineyard in Nantucket and other wealthy enclaves that are using up the resources of the planet. And the energy of the planet and the materials through, you know, sort of rampant consumption and our economies are built on that. And that's, that's something that I think we have to start really wrestling with is how do we transform our, you know. Primary season, seasonal economy in, in a way that. Um, is more sustainable and isn't a burden, not just on the islands. But on the rest of the planet as well. So tons of work to be done. You know, use a climate lens on all your decision making. I think that's the, the most important thing we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. That was really great feedback. Susan?
Here we go. I got it. I muted. Hi, Susan Damaris from Oak Fluffs. I have lived on the vineyard since the nineteen nineties and am an environmentalist. And I really just came to this meeting in part to talk about trees and water. And I loved what Ben Robinson said and, um. One of the things that I find heartbreaking when I watch all this development going in and a lot of the. Luxury homes and so forth is the clear cutting of land. And just old trees are taken down and then new ornamentals are put in and sawed and. Automatic sprinkler systems and all of that. And. You know, I think that if we're thinking long-term and if we're thinking about li- climate change, if you look at the data. On particularly what old growth native trees and plantings do for our environment, whether it's. Heating and cooling or purifying or oxygen, um, cleaning the air. It's really significant and I just wonder if there's a way. To be included in some of the development and building guidelines that say, for instance, only a certain percentage of trees can be cut down. Or, you know, native species must be used or whatever. I'm, I'm no expert in this. I just know what I've. Been seeing for, for, for decades in the world and then the last couple decades here and. I think it's real damaging. And if we're going to talk about sustainability, I think that's an important part of the conversation. Thank you.
Brooke Horn?
So I've been doing a lot of work, um, in the private sector in the last year or so on, uh, analyzing food insecurity issues in Nantucket and. I think when I think about sustainability, I think about, um. People being able to earn a wage that sustains them and their families in a healthy way. And on a year-round basis, um. The stress on other human services, mental health issues, um. Uh, on, you know, when, when people are struggling with housing, struggling with food insecurity and. You know, uh, just, I'm, I'm sort of rambling here, but the, the, my other concern is that, you know, our economies are based on growth. More of. And we're islands and how do we have the conversation about? Where does this, where does this end and what does it look like to have a, a sustainable economic environment? You know, from, yeah, health of our harbors, um. Water quality, all of these issues. You know, what is the end game for, for our island? And, um. I don't, you know, I don't know how we start to have that conversation, but recently I, um. Was participated in a conference on, um, historic preservation and housing and there was an economist who spoke and. And he talked about communities that have tried to analyze carrying capacity. And then he said, generally speaking, there hasn't really been a place that, that. Has successfully analyzed and created, um. You know, rules or limitations. He already talked about Venice and some other places to try to visit our economy. And, um, he said the only location that he knew of that had. Had any success in this was a rural community in Portugal that was a cork producing. Community and when the wine industry changed and the bottom fell out of the cork industry. They retooled themselves into a visitor economy because it's a Rome, they have a Roman, um. Wall city as the center of their city. And. This reminded me of the wine industry in Nantucket and, and what happened here and how we ended up where we are with a tourist economy. And, um, he said, before they started building out a first economy, they had a values-based discussion. About what, what lenses did they want to look? Through as they were determining their future as a tourist economy and they decided that they were going to protect.
Uh, thanks, Erica. Whoa, okay.
That was moving around so quickly, I couldn't.
Uh, yeah, I couldn't even unmute to say something.
Yeah. Um, anyway, they made that, they, they, they decided to value their infrastructure and the community that lived there. And that every development decision they make or thing they allow is seen through those lenses. And I just thought that was just really interesting. And I don't know, you know, the horse is out of the barn here for, to some extent, but how do we circle back and have that kind of conversation? Um, here on our island is something I've been thinking a lot about.
Thank you, Brooke. And I mean, one, one of the things that I worry about is every time we. Try to put in some kind of a limitation to sort of save other things, the unintended, unintended consequences. Seem to lead us further into a more elitist. Economy. And, um, it's really hard to balance that. Um, because it's, it's not, it's not really leading Nantucket in the best direction. James?
Hi, uh, my. Audio on? Can you hear me?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, that, um. God, you'd think people would have more time to do something else for themselves. Anyway, uh. The comment that I'd make about sustainability and tourism and so on is a comment that I made at our last meeting, which. I despair that our islands are sinking under the weight of money. And I haven't been able to do any research that takes me in any other direction. And I want to give you a little example that sort of keys off of what Ben Robinson said earlier about the lens. Through which we look at things. We have, uh. In our island, in our town, we have a number of farms, generational farms and some new owner farms. And one of the issues that we are grappling with is do we allow the farms to do? What they have historically done, which is to grow produce product and meat. Uh, and sell them to the people who want to eat it. And buy it and expand on that traditional farming produce product and meat. Or do we let them to continue to develop? And a number of our farms have gone this way because the. Attraction of economic, the economics is such that. It's very profitable to sell things that are not produce product or meat. In these farm stands that essentially have become retail stores for all things Martha's Vineyard and or. What's a good word? And or saleable in a two-month economy for people who are interested in buying. Really nice handicrafts or, uh, books or things that basically aren't farm produce. And I think to Ben's point. The towns as they, or the town in Nantucket and the towns on the island of Martha's Vineyard. Need to, through zoning. Deal with the issues that we've been discussing today. Particularly in light of where do we want to go and what makes sense to our future and is it? Everyone's right. To do whatever the market will take in what's essentially a very price elastic two months. Where you can virtually charge anything for anything that's labeled Martha's Vineyard in Nantucket. And if you put it out there, people will buy it for two months. But that really isn't going to feed us for the remaining ten months. And that's, I believe, a crucial, critical component of things we've been talking about today. And that's my sermon for the moment. Thank you.
No, thank you. Bob Johnston?
Yes, thank you very much and, um. Thank you for calling this meeting. It's all been valuable, but the last twenty minutes have been, for me at least, uh, the most valuable. And potentially the most valuable to each island. There's a whole body of knowledge that's emerged over the last couple of decades. On how communities, I'll say how islands. Um, align and create for themselves a preferred future. And the backbone of that is pulling together the right group of people. As the people on this call. Leaping out into the future and exploring all the possibilities of what that future. Might be. In a way that these communities. Would have the finest quality of life. And would want to build it together. I think everyone on the call I'm sure has, knows about and maybe has attended the One Cape Summit. Um, going back four years. There was conversation about a One Cape and Islands Summit. Uh, I think you could look at this meeting as being. Perhaps a launch of the first island summit. Where the primary mission would be to answer that question, what is the end game for these two islands? You're the right people. Islanders would be attracted to that and want to give input into that. It's a creative exercise. Um, it's a community building exercise. And. I can't think of anything more valuable that the people on this call could contribute. To a preferred future for each island. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, sustainability is a big topic and, um, I, I like your thinking, Bob, and I think that we, we can contribute a lot to each other. Um, you know, even with our ongoing sports rivalry, but. We, um. We have so many similarities and we, we should be, be working together more because that, it just. It, it just helps all of us. Shall I move on to wastewater? It feels like a little bit of a letdown for the end topic. Uh, it's a big problem. Wastewater management. Libby, did you have any thoughts on this?
Um, I think, um, Tisbury wanted to talk about this, but I'm not sure. I thought Jay, you asked for this to be on, or me, I can't remember, but, um, it sort of overlaps a bit with the DEP regs discussion, I think. We have a lot of wastewater issues going on here. Like I said, we're updating our sewer master plan. Um, with the build out of and updated costs. We, um, are finishing up a couple of really big sewer projects. We have, we have a third sewer force main in our downtown. If you all recall, I hate to even bring it up, but we had a sewer break in, um, twenty eighteen. On January fourth, um, and that was. Very difficult, but in the good news side of things, we are about maybe not quite halfway through. The installation of a new force main. And it's a very disruptive project. It's going to go through neighborhoods and, um, it's started over the winter. Gives us an opportunity to redo some sidewalks and some roads that probably needed, needed to have been redone anyway. And so lots of sewer stuff going on over here.
Christina?
I, I couldn't remember the acronym earlier. It's called a Responsible Management Entity. It's basically the, um, Barnstable just is doing a pilot program right now. To. Start this sort of separate utility to help with the advanced septic systems. So I just wanted to say the right acronym for that. The other thing is the last time I was on Nantucket, I did see the, um. Stormwater collection pumping system that's right on the beach there. And I was wondering if you could fill us in more about that, um. I, I basically, I just kind of stumbled upon it when I was walking by and I was like, oh, this is kind of interesting. And then I walked down the pier. And by the, I was there only for a short period of time, like taking pictures and video and it had kicked on twice. I didn't know. Is it filtered? How does it work? And, um, because that's something obviously with especially the, um. Down island towns with stormwater and flooding.
So stormwater is also a very big topic here. Yeah, we have a number of initiatives going on, but in a nutshell, the system that you saw, Christina, is at, uh, Children's Beach. Um, the managers are coming over here tomorrow. Maybe we'll go take a look at it. And it's, 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 um, kind of an interim system. It, it isn't meant to be there permanently, but it has been a huge help in addressing waste. Stormwater issues in, in this very low-lying neighborhood of Brant. It's the Brant Point Children's Beach area. So we are underway with an evaluation of. The, the watershed of Children's Beach, basically, and. Um, an evaluation of the existing stormwater systems such as it is for that area and determining. Where pipes might be blocked and if we unblock them, does it improve things? Where pipes might need to be extended, where outfalls might be able to go. As, uh, along with a, um, capacity, maintenance and operations. Management Plan, C-M-O-N, I think that's kind of the acronym. I can't remember all the exact words that go with it, but. Anyway, um, we're working with the land bank, our, our land bank on an outfall. Area for, for some of this. Part of our problem here in this particular low-lying area is not only sea level rise and climate change, but there's been a lot of development in the area. So the. The vegetation that used to take in some of this water is now gone. And, and it doesn't have, the water has nowhere to go except the ends of people's driveways. And now we get a lot of complaining about, there's a pond at the end of my driveway. What are you going to do about it? So we're struggling with those types of things. And the water that, that you saw, the outfall at Children's Beach is filtered and, um. Permitted. Permitted. But. We need to really make sure that the filtering is adequate and um, I'm sure our, we have an um. Uh, update to our harbors plan underway as well, I'm sure they're going to take a look at this. So it's. Lot of moving parts with stormwater, it's very dynamic, we are also in the process of. Creating a stormwater division within the sewer department. And that is proving to be a little more challenging than we originally thought, we didn't think through every little detail at the beginning and now we're finding out. What those details are, so it's just, it's a transition, it's a process, but it's definitely. Um. Something we that is very much being worked on in a lo- a lot of locations, where for some reason this summer, we're finding a lot of catch basins. Are. Seemingly caving in or sinking in or becoming damaged and part of that is definitely due to heavy trucks. No question. But. Also. There are a lot of them are on main roads, so now we're trying to figure out when are we going to fix them, can't do it during the day. And getting it, getting to it at night is challenging as well, but it there's just. It's a lot, but anyway, that's the story with that particular, um. Situation.
Just just Matt again, quick follow up on that, the areas that Libby is describing uh historically are interesting. They were the infill areas, that was areas of wetlands. That the, you know, islanders at the time just filled in just as much as they had to. To be able to build in there or to be able to do shipbuilding or to build houses. Uh, and that's the Brant Point area, so that's going to be one of the first areas that's going to be severely impacted with sea level rise. Because it was on, you know, almost underwater before anyway, and it's the same thing with Washington Street, Washington Street. Is uh, uh, sort of the other side of the harbor and that was all wetlands and the way they filled it in is they. Cut, oh, they, you know, there was a. Uh, you know, sort of a walk, there was a uh, higher, what do you call it, cliff? And they cut half of that, put it down below on the wetlands and, you know, created Washington Street. So I think that, uh, you know, those, the, it's interesting that stuff that we did a hundred and fifty years ago, first one, it's it's illustrative and a lot, good lesson. That's go- going to be the stuff we're going to have to deal with first or not be able to deal with over time.
Thanks, Matt. Um, does anyone else want to speak on this topic? Um, so just to throw it out there before we all adjourn, um, I think we should consider making this like a biannual. Thing and meet sometime in the winter when we're not all as, you know, crazy busy and um, and so summer insanity. Um. And and, you know, continue. To share and work together. On our sort of um crossover issues. Um, so I'm just, I'll I'll put that out there for now. Um, since apparently I've. Run this meeting, I guess I'll adjoint my meeting, adjourn my meeting last, so I'm not sure which town would like to go first on adjournment.
Um. Don't knock, uh, uh. I would entertain a vote and I think Maria is still here to adjourn the children's select board meeting.
I'm here and I. Second. Bye.
We're, uh, Don, thank you for pulling this together and for running this thing.
Well, definitely thank Libby Gibson for that, but.
Okay, thank you, Libby, for supporting and running this thing.
Thank you.
Um, but. Who's next to adjourn? Someone just jump in.
Wes Tisbury is already adjourned because people have other meetings, so I think I'm the only one left. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and um, I will see my counterparts tomorrow.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the same for Oplufts to jump in, we lost our quorum sometime before five forty, so there's nothing really to adjourn, but thank you very much, we'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you, Deborah. All right, um. Motion to adjourn for Nantucket. Thank you, Brooke, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
I'll listen here for Matt. Brooke Moore.
Hi.
I'm Dixon.
Hi.
I'm Holgate, I. Again, nice to see everyone, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.